Yeah.
Yeah, it was pretty.
Sweet. All right.
When you guys had the twenty eight below here, we had eighty two above there.
Yes, yeah, just to play solar.
Any other thing to add?
Anybody else?
Motion approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Sorry. Motion by Brian seconded by Jody, discussion, all favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carried. Proven minutes from our February meeting.
We got a typo on that first motion up there. The minutes, okay, that fixed.
Second?
All second.
By Brian. Discussion. All favor signify by saying aye. Let me go on to new business, the cannabis ordinance introduction.
Yes, right, so in the, the city's efforts kinda, you know. Well, I mean, I guess let me back up the. The city can't say no if someone wants to come in with cannabis business, they can't, and in order to. So, right, if we can't say no, we. Yeah, we can't control it, so to control it, we have to have an ordinance, so. I was talking with Sourcewell, and they sent me a bunch of different cities ordinances and. Like everywhere in Minnesota, everything's just a little bit different, some cities will incorporate their ordinance into their land use. But just the, the amount of changes that are kinda happening around cannabis, i- it's good just to have its own stand alone ordinance, so that's. What I did, I took this one from Emily and Emily, Minnesota. They're about same size as us, and they have pretty much the same kind of city layout as well. So really what I want, you know, the commission's. You know, thoughts on is if we can kinda page ahead here to. Three dot two zoning and land use, I'd like the, the commission's thoughts on where this should be. Now, our actual land use ordinance says a thousand feet from a school and then five hundred feet from. Basically, public, public areas. And places where minors are. Now, our ordinance doesn't, doesn't specify exactly what that five hundred feet is for, but I believe the spirit of the ordinance is. That is for the consumption of cannabis, not. You know, other things, however, just given the, the feet distance, I really am only gonna propose the C two district, which is. The highway commercial, which you can see just south of Spirit Lake there. It's that darker pink.
We were Monaga Marine, was that area?
Yes, and then we have also the industrial district as well. Now, I have all of that already baked in here, you'll notice under cultivation. You know, there's indoor and outdoor use for manufacturer, obviously, that would all be indoor. And then another interesting point, when it comes to signage, they would just fall under. What our land use ordinance says about it, which is they lay out the specifics in there. It absolutely is pretty basic, so I mean, I figure cultivation, so you're, you're, you're growing the cannabis. You know, if you wanna do that next to the highway, we're, you know, I, I would recommend maybe having that just indoors. And. Yeah, okay, fence it something, and then, you know, in the industrial district, well, you know, okay, go ahead. And then. What's the other one? Manufacturer, so. You know, industrial district, highway commercial, okay, if you want to create your. You know, products you wanna consume. You know, wholesale. Again, highway commercial, industrial cannabis retail, so if you want to sell, you know, just have your, your stand, if you will, again. Yeah, optics wise. Is that something that everyone wants to see coming into town? I don't know. Or just again, limit that just to industrial, you know, just something to think about. Cannabis transportation, honestly, I think that could almost go anywhere, because if it's just being transported. Or they have a, you know, distribution center, I mean, you're never gonna see it, it's just going from A to B. Cannabis delivery. And then all of their cannabis business license by, not licensed by the state. Just limit that to, again, highway commercial and industrial.
This is an ordinance, do we have to have a public comment on this?
Uh, yes, there will be a public hearing for it, yeah. And it'll just go through the whole timeline, just like. We did for the land use.
So are we gonna hold the hearing then, or the council, or?
Well, I believe it's the. Yeah, I believe that it's the council's intention to hold the public hearing for these, and then to, to really look at these and kinda really discuss them. Yeah, I wanted to bring it here first and just hear your thoughts when, before I bring it up, this is, this is on the agenda for the tenth. So, you know, whatever recommendations are made here tonight, I'll, I'll put those in, and they'll just be further talking points.
Anyone have any comments on there that they wanna bring up, or?
I personally would like to see it. Oh, not. Down where the kids are, or the schools, or.
That's what these are, these are all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, let me, like, my whole thought, honey, because I, you know, it's optics, right, too? Yeah, basically here, and then industrial district.
Yeah.
Where's the school on that, man?
Uh, the school would be. Yeah. Even then, so I think we'd probably cut it really close if someone was gonna set up a business right here. And then again, all these permits are conditional use. So we're gonna have leverage to really like, you have to, you have to bring us a plan, and we have to examine it and approve it, it's not just gonna be a, hey, I bought some land and grown weed. Right, so this is gonna be a deliberate process.
This has been through Emily's legal and whatnot, right?
Yeah, and that's kinda one of the other great advantages is, you know, their document, you know, it already went for public hearing, and. Really, other than just some cosmetic changes, and then tailoring it just to Monaga, really, it's. You know, they saved us a lot of, a lot of work and probably a good chunk of money.
All the verbiage comes straight from there.
Correct.
It sounds like we have a pretty good thumb on things.
Yeah, well, that's the whole intention. We can't, like you said, we can't say no, but we can say. Get ahead of it before somebody does decide to move into town.
And I mean, anything's possible, you know, I, I. I mean, so far, I think I've gotten one call and just a couple emails about it, and I, and I really think that they're just, they're really fishing, and they're just throwing out a huge net. Just to see, you know, what are cities doing? And then what's the reasonable expectation, you know, and if someone wants to come here and, you know, they wanna set up a shop in the industrial district, okay, that's great, their. Their vehicles are filling up at our gas stations, they're shopping at our grocery stores, you know, they're spending money in town, and, you know, I think it's, it's a, it's a net win. And let's be honest, you hear way more drunk driving accidents than you do driving high, and I mean, it's. You know, whatever the appetite morality is about it, it, it's good for the city. Bring in business, so.
Like, are okay on it then, or?
Yeah, yeah, you're okay, and then any comments you have, like, you know, like, especially like for cultivation, I mean, you know, cause I, I just, I plugged it in what I thought made sense, all right, and that's just what Brett thought. All right, so if you have an opinion about something, or you feel strongly about like, hey, I don't want wholesale, you know, on seventy one, we should just limit that to the industrial, then yeah, I mean, those, those kinda comments I'm looking for, for sure.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna limit them if they do live in the town, you know, I don't wanna limit their exposure. Either if a business comes in to make money, they're gonna want some highway exposure, so they might wanna do that highway. Commercial there so that their sign is right out there when people are going by, I don't have the issue with that. Like, you've got that as indoor for cultivation, so that one's beef, the field that are growing there, and the industrial parking, he sees it. I don't have, I think you've got a pretty good handle on it here, that looks to me, in my opinion.
And so, you said that in any case, if someone wants to set up this business, it would be a conditional use.
Everything is conditional use, yes.
Yes, that was the objection to it.
Listen to your talk at all time, though, about the liquor stores.
So, the, the difference, and this is actually coming up on the, the tenth as well, is the liquor store wants to sell edibles and the, the drinkable THC. I, I'm not a connoisseur nor an enjoyer, so I can't give you the specifics, but what I do know is it's relatively cheap to buy into, the markup is fantastic. And we get some of that tax back as well, and, you know, we're a pretty popular place in the summertime, we have one of the best disc golf courses in the region, it's only gonna get better. You know, we're gonna start attracting significantly more people, and we're, you know, we already get at least one or two calls a day with the campsites filling up, and. You know, they do come to the liquor store, that's where they go and purchase their, their beverages, and they do frequently ask if we sell THC products, and. You know, we, well, we don't, and what do they do? Well, they drive down to Wadena or drive up to Park Rapids, whatever their place is, so why, why not have it here for them to spend their money on?
And I think it's, I think it's twenty percent of the tax.
Yeah, yep.
That's what I was wondering, even, even like. This thing here, if they sell, there'd be a tax on that, or the city gain anything from that, or?
Yes.
I think that's the same thing on this, is important.
Yeah, I think we might as well be ready for it, I think.
But you're talking edibles now, what are you talking?
Cannabis specifically, this is for.
Edibles are like.
Yeah, oh, gummy bears, yeah, yeah.
These are, the drinks are just a drink, like a beer can. They just got THC and CBD in them. They sell them. Seventy one bottles in Park Rapids sells them, I've been up there and worked, they sell a lot, and that Dorset corner there, they sell. And they're making. Some of that stuff's a hundred and twenty percent markup.
They are a chunk of it.
So that's, that's, that's really, that's kind of our thoughts, yeah.
We're always asking Heather to find a way to make more money, like. Taxes down. So it sounds like nobody's against it, Brian.
No, I'm against it, so. So would you wanna, like, a motion from us, or just an agreement?
I, just, just an agreement, yeah. Yeah, consensus would be great, and, you know, when, when Monday happens, I'm just gonna say like, hey, you know, we went. Brought this to the planning commission, they looked at it, they, and, you know, again, I'm gonna explain to the council, like, a lot of the language in here, it, it's just not gonna change at all. So the, the things that we can influence are, where do we put it, and I'm gonna just try to leave that same discussion. Say, planning commission just, you know, has consensus that the locations where we wanna put this is acceptable.
Well, if there are any problems, Amy's the one that's gonna end up at the problems, right?
Well, in this, I mean.
There shouldn't be, but.
Very, it's less problems than alcohol by law, which is everywhere, I mean.
The other thing is, if, if they're high on cannabis, is it recognizable by the law enforcement?
Oh, yeah.
It is, okay, that's.
Cause they have, driving under the influence of just for alcohol, it's influence of anything.
Right, yeah.
They can, they've got all the.
Do they have like a breathalyzer test or something?
Not, not for that, they do a field test, and then you do a blood test. They won't show up on a breath test.
I've been out of the drug game for too long.
Well, yeah, I guess I don't know either, you know, I just. Was curious, I guess, more than anything.
Do you have me to, yeah, I can, I can reach out to Amy and, you know.
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, okay.
I'm pretty sure that's all the, you know, it's the same deal, but she would know for sure. And it would be good just to know.
And we're just looking, you know, firsthand experience on, you know, what, what it's like to. Yeah, yeah, okay.
The thing is, you know. The more this becomes available and stuff, the more it might come similar to, to alcohol now, you know.
Well, I mean, I mean, just another perspective, right, you know, Minnesota's like, what, one of just a few states that, that has it completely legal, I mean, it's federally, it's still an offense, I mean, if the feds show up, they could just say, well, yeah, nope, it's legal. I mean, I'm guessing, right, I don't think they would do that.
No, they don't mess with the states. Wadena County hasn't done theirs, have you ever?
Don't, I have to check again.
I know we thought about waiting, but how long you have to wait?
Right, yeah.
County to do something.
Wait till it's too late.
Rapids did theirs two months ago, Nevis did theirs at the same time. So they're getting ahead of it.
Also, they're all relatively the same.
Yeah, it's, it's a typical.
Yeah.
It's just a controller, since you can't say no, we just have, they're able to control it.
Yeah, well, I think the consensus is that we're okay with it, I guess.
Okay, if you think of anything between now and Monday, something comes to your head, please email me your thoughts. I'll, I'll send this to Amy, and then I'll send an email out to you guys tomorrow with, with her response.
Anything else under? Business, I guess we didn't have anything. No old business?
Uh, no, we don't have any permits, we're still waiting, I, I, I think we're gonna probably start seeing some trickle in here as the thaw happens. Still waiting on Mr. Rennenberg, he did bring me a. A lot split that works perfectly, instead of just having it split three ways, it's just, just two lots now, and they, they work, I mean, yes, yeah. Sorry, so I, I mean, I, I think I'm comfortable just approving it, and I'll bring it in after the fact, it, it meets all the minimums. By good margins.
There's no way they could do it three ways.
No, no.
Are those rentals?
Yeah, and that's the, he's, the one cabin wants to do a contract for deed, so he had to get the property right, because the property line actually went through the middle of that second cabin, so they had to get it straight enough.
Is anything happening, happening, I can't talk today, on Shingles, that great old place up there, the marine?
Oh, the Monaga Marine?
Yeah.
Jason Funk bought the storage units, but I don't know if anybody's bought that front building yet, because that's, that's separate, that actual Monaga Marine building is separate, I don't know if anybody's bought that yet, I know they have people. About that switched hands, I don't know.
Is he going to use it for storage, you know?
Yeah, he called me, I got a camper stored out there, and he called me and gave me the, introduced himself and whatnot. So it'll continue as storage, campers storage. For you guys to think about, there's a, obviously, a housing shortage in this town, like most. We're trying to, I'm kicking around ideas, trying to come up with anything we can to find a way to encourage some development, and I certainly don't have all the answers, and I don't know what all we can do, I'm just looking for any ideas, anything that could work, like, what, I think it was Mills. They sold some city property, city lots to developers for a dollar with the condition that they had to have a house structure built on it within a year. So then it brings tax base. So we've got some city land that's just sitting and doing nothing.
Where's that?
We've got the old softball fields out at Southgate, there's, it's actually split into three lots, it's kind of a weird deal, but it's 11 something acres of high ground there, I think. That's a possible, because it's got water and sewer stubbed right to it already, it'd be a very simple development for people. And then, Monaga Development Corp, I guess, is kind of around doing something with their property, but they want the city to foot the bill on all the, on all the utilities, which, you know, I'm just, I just want everybody to start thinking about anything, any ways that we can think of to encourage somebody to come in and build some housing, and see, I mean, apparently, there's a lot of people that want to live here, and they can't find a house. There's nothing for sale hardly.
Well, would those end up being residential lots or commercial lots, or?
Well, right now, it's an industrial park, but there's a, there's a residential right in front of it, to the south side of that parcel is residential house, and then there's those three lots, and then there's Minnesota Power, I think Minnesota Power has their little substation section there, so it wouldn't be hard, we, we did, last year, we kicked one of those industrial lots for Schaefer.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
I don't, nobody's beating their door down to come and put anything in that industrial park.
That's, hey, if somebody comes up with a better idea, you know.
Yeah, it's just, I'm just trying to get some ideas from anybody I can possibly, you know, just, it'd be a crazy idea, we'll take them all, and we'll see what sticks, see if we can make anything work.
But water and sewer is up to?
Yeah, right now, for those, we already had a hydrant out there, where it was a softball field, we had a bathroom in that, we had a bathroom in that one.
I think, I thought we had old wells out there, too, I know, we, I think we just capped them last summer.
But I know there's a, I think Ron said there's a four inch water main that stubs right to that property, and the sewer's right there going down the road, too, so, yes, for a developer, it would be very inexpensive to, to put something in out there. But it's just a matter.
Owns the pallet lot out there now?
That's cool, I don't know, but look at my Onyx, I'll tell me. I looked that up once. Does that?
Was Qualion Polio, Polio used to own it, I think.
Yeah, that's, that has changed. Like, Kevin Eckhoff had that other corner there, he's got a house on the corner of it, and then he's got a big lot out there, Roger, Roger Lee, they used to have that deal out there, that's a, I think that's his, now it does the trucking there. Or just truck there.
Or mine, I can't see out of them, I can't either from something.
What was that say right there?
Murphy, Thomas, and Gladys.
Also still Tom and Gladys, Gladys still owns it, though. I know they had had it, and then that next lot was Schaefer that we turned to residential.
Yeah, because Gladys come into that hearing when we had that hearing for that.
She sold that.
Oh, we'd have to look on G I S, but these are, these are usually pretty up to date.
They're still stuck out there.
Yeah, well, it's just, basically, it's just that old slab, there's an old concrete slab there, and a few things laying around, but it's, it's pretty well taken down. We haven't had any, anybody trying to come in and put a business in for a long time. We're not in, we're not in the greatest area for that, we just don't have the right corridor for transportation. I have this thought, if you guys think of any.
Beer's open or whatever.
Awesome way to encourage it. Tax base, more tax base means less taxes per.
Has Rennenberg done out there now, or is he still adding?
Uh, he'll still add as he sells, he kind of, kind of build one and sell it, or some of it, they actually sell the lot first, and then people build. He's got plans for all the way around that whole golf course, but that's, so, who knows? I can't afford a house over.
Yeah, I think that's more of your, the elderly, isn't it, than, yeah.
There are some kids out there, too.
Are, are there?
Yeah, they're not going older very well. The kids that are out there.
Well, if you imagine raising kids and you have no lot at all, two, 10 feet out of your thing, it's your property line, you know. Next meeting?
I believe the next meeting is, uh, that would be April 3rd, April 3rd, yes.
All of that lots were put in force?
Yes.
Looking for a couple permits.
I think, I think we might. Yeah, I mean, provided we don't have winter coming back, and.
Oh, it does that here.
You can tell it's getting closer, because first day of spring, okay, because when I come, come east, the sun's right in my eyes, and then evening.
And 5:00 PM is working good for everybody, it's a, it's a very comfortable time.
Yeah, I think it works good.
Did work for you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm going to stay late tonight for the first responders, I haven't been to one of their meetings yet, so I'm just going to sit in the back and see what's going on. We got a lot of work done when it's really quiet here.
It's great, nobody calling.
Nobody's calling.
Yeah.
Was they adjourned?
I'll make it longer.
On favor signified by saying aye.
It is 5:29.
The council meeting's real quick.
You're getting a good chairman.